Today is Tuesday, August 9th. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. I appreciate everybody braving the elements to attend this meeting. So you're obviously a very brave bunch. Thanks for showing up. Do we have any introductions or announcements today?
Yes, we do, Mayor. First of all, this month is the 50th anniversary of the Caborca Sister City Program. On August 14th, 1972, Mayor Taylor Hicks signed a proclamation for the city of Prescott to become an official sister city with Caborca, Mexico. This was the first of three sister cities that Prescott would form cultural relationships with. We would like to thank Dr. Will Fisher and the entire Caborca Sister City Committee for their commitment and for putting together this year's celebrations of half-century of sister cities in Prescott. Caborca Sister Cities will host a 50th anniversary Gala Ball on Saturday, September 17th, at the beautiful Adult Center. Tickets are $40 for Sister Cities members and $60 for non-members. To reserve your seat, contact Stephanie Miller at the Prescott Chamber of Commerce. Email her at stephanie@prescott.org, or call her at (928) 445-2000, or drop by the Chamber office. And also, the application process is still open for the Prescott City Council seat that is open due to Councilwoman Jessica Hall's resignation. The application filing deadline is 5:00 PM tomorrow, Wednesday, August 10th. The council will review applications next Tuesday, August 16th, during an executive meeting. Then, there will be a special public meeting the following Tuesday, August 23rd, during which council will interview the finalists and select the new council member. The new council member will be sworn in on Tuesday, September 13th. We would like to thank all those that have applied, and good luck. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Matt Cotton with his solid rock Christian fellowship, followed by a pledge of allegiance from councilman Montoya.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we give you praise and thanks for your goodness. Thank you for the rain that is much needed. Thank you, Lord, for this council, for this city, for the wisdom that you have given here. And, Father, we ask that you would guide and direct this meeting and the decisions that are made by the mayor and these council members for the flourishing of Prescott, for the good of our town. Father, we ask that you would give them insight that is beyond theirs. Father, we ask that you would help that which is good and right to prevail in all things. We give you praise and thanks for all of your blessings that we so richly enjoy. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Thank you. I know we were scheduled to have a presentation from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality regarding the Voluntary Environmental Stewardship Program Award with the Granite Creek Cleanup Project that was done. However, ADEQ just notified us recently that they weren't able to make the trip up the hill due to weather. So we will postpone that presentation until the council meeting on September 13th. So we'll proceed to an open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do have one comment card today from Richard Tepak.
Thanks. I live in Walker, down Walker Road, and recently-
Sir, I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Okay. I live in Walker, off of Big Bug Mesa Road and Walker Road. And recently, driving down Walker Road, I noticed there's a whole bunch of APS white flag markers. So the rumor has it, they're putting in power poles down Walker Road. So I don't know if this is something that came in front of this council, or if I'm in the right spot or not, but I want to know if the council did approve this project, or where I go from here for more information, because I just don't understand, in this day and age, putting power lines above ground, especially in a forest area where it's promoting fires and loss of life and property, anesthetics, obviously, instead of maybe, you know, APS profit. So am I in the right place to address this? Was this put before the council?
Not really, no.
Do the people of Prescott know about this project?
Well, we can't really engage in a dialogue for you, but I can tell you that we're only responsible for the boundaries of the city of Prescott.
Does that not include Walker Road?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So do I go to the county?
Probably start with APS. Their Public Information Officer, Darla DeVille, might be able to help you.
What's that name?
Darla DeVille.
Darla DeVille.
She's in the Community Relations.
Is anybody else concerned about the aesthetics of power lines going down Walker Road?
Haven't heard anything.
Okay.
I think that would be beyond what they can talk about, other than respond to criticism or set it for a different agenda.
Okay. But, I mean, that's not approved project from this council.
No, that's APS.
So APS or the county?
Both, probably.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
That's all, Mayor.
All right. We will then proceed to the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item that they want to pull off consent? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8I.
Second.
Motion second. Any further comment? Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right. We'll move on to the consent ordinance.
Adoption of ordinance number 2022-1806, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public water line easement agreement from CBH Properties Prescott LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Any comments or concerns on this consent ordinance? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance item 9A.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right. We'll move on to our regular agenda, then.
Approval of city contract number 2023-019 for the purchase of three CAT 420XE-07 backhoes from Empire Machinery using City of Tucson RFP number 161534.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tim Legler, Deputy Director, Recreation Services. I need backhoes. I mean, so basically, through FARM, which is the Facilities Assessment Review Board, we went through the departments this past spring and came up with a list of vehicles, as you guys are aware. The backhoes is some equipment that was on that. So the fleet manager, Justin, went out. We got quotes based on the contracts, the RFP from the city of Tucson. Caterpillar was the most comparable quote, was priced right with the attachments that each department was looking for. So rather than keep bringing you backhoe after backhoe, we just grouped them together to bring you as one package. So we haven't, the city hasn't replaced a backhoe in about 19 years. So while they use quite frequent, sometimes they sit, sometimes do. They're essential for snow removal, water repairs, sewer repairs, Recreation Services use them for a variety of tree removals, you name it, they get used there, all over town. Through all the departments, we share backhoes. You know, if mine's closer than his, he might use mine, and vice versa. So we really just utilize it throughout the city. The pricing with Caterpillar includes these, the old ones, being traded in. We're not trading in the exact ones, but what we're doing is we're taking the older ones out of the city's fleet. So like, the golf course has a case backhoe that's in the 1980s. That one's going to go to auction, and we're going to give them one of the others that's coming down. So we're kind of flushing out the really old, worn-out stuff while getting a little more life out of these. Kind of it. I'll take any questions you have.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have an idea of what we'll get for that backhoe at auction, just out of curiosity?
So, yeah, each one's listed on the quotes, and I'll just kind of tell you each one. So from the water department one that we're trading in, it's $23,500. The golf course one, because it's pretty antique, it's only $9,000. The street department one that's trading in is at $26,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it just seems to be a little fiscally impactful when you kind of wait to replace these backhoes all at once. I know a couple of these probably should have been put in a previous year's budget, and I imagine your cost probably would have been substantially less. But, you know, you got to have them, so Mayor Protem, you had a question?
Oh, I was just wondering if there was going to be any difficulty acquiring these backhoes in light of what's been going on recently.
My understanding is no. First of the year. First of the year, we'll have them.
Okay. Thank you.
So you got about a, what, five-month lead time?
Five to six months, yes.
All right. Any other concerns or comments? Public input on that one?
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Somebody has his finger up.
One question.
You have to fill out a comment card.
There's a blue comment card in the back, if you'd like to fill it out.
Mike Hefley. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Mike Hefley. I live in one of the areas around here. My question is, is if there's a five-month lead time, can it be written up anyway in which two of them go into this year's budget and the next two go into the following year's budget? I don't know if that's available or not.
Well, usually, budgetary requests are made during our budget workshop, and those are adopted prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, which was July 1st.
Yeah, fiscal year's July 1st through June 30th, so we're still in one year.
So otherwise, we'd have to put it into next fiscal year's budget workshop, and then we'd be here a year from now considering the replacement.
We'd have to determine if that's advantageous, which, as you just suggested, it might be disadvantageous.
That's right. All right. Well, thank you. I'll entertain a motion on this, please.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-019.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0. Adoption of resolution number 2022-1838, updating the council's policy for the formation of community facilities districts.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and council, Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director with the city. Talking about one of my favorite topics today, community facilities districts, otherwise referred to as CFDs. So CFDs are something the development community had our state legislature put into law. They are formed solely for the benefit of the developer. Developers use them in a variety of ways, depending on various things. The issue is, it's a way for the developer to not pay some of the costs they're responsible for upfront. It enables them to put those costs into a bond issue that is then put onto the property owners, either through an assessment or through a property tax. It is not for, it's for infrastructure specific to that development. So we were working with, of course, many developers over the last several years. We've talked about our CFDs. CFDs were crippled by the developers a few years ago at the state legislature. They put all these requirements in that kept them from being able to be formed, essentially. That got fixed two legislative sessions ago. So CFDs are now available option that a developer could bring to the city council as an option. So we looked at our policy, which was from 1995, and I did the best job I could when I wrote it in 1995, but there's been significant changes. So we've been working with the legal department, our outside bond counsel, Michael Cofiso, as well as our financial advisor, Kurt Freund, who was here a couple months ago. We talked about the debt of the city, and we mentioned that this was going to be coming. So it's here. As we wrote this, we went back and forth, and we came up with a good policy. It gives the council authority to make decisions. It outlines what staff felt is kind of our priorities, but it does not limit the council. The council can do whatever the council ends up wanting to do within the law. But CFDs, in staff's humble opinion, should be used for high-quality development for items that are unusual to that development, not for putting in water and sewer lines, for putting a creek crossing, or a trail crossing, or something that's unique to that subdivision, a unique need. Makes some sense there. So anyway, we wrote the policy with those intent, as well as outlined what needs to be in the application, as well as who's responsible for insurance and indemnification for these things. Again, it's a lengthy policy, but the one we have is very out of date. So the resolution today rescends those two ordinances, that that policy was written by many decades ago, and adopts a complete new one. And with that, I defer to Joe, if he had any comments on it.
No. Other than to say that the previous policy was very outdated, the laws had changed probably multiple times, and so it needed to be brought into compliance with the laws that stands today. And I think we've done so in a way that benefits the city to the fullest extent.
Does that make bonding more likely to be provided?
Well, you need to have a policy so that it's clear, so council can be, have a good framework to make a decision on whether the CFD should be formed. The CFD is a totally separate political subdivision from the city of Prescott. The bonds issued by the CFD are the responsibility of the CFD and not a legal responsibility of the city. So they, yes, it will help the bonds to be able to be sold. However, since this is a very politically small area with no underlying writing, the bonds often have a very high interest rate, which the developers don't seem to mind, because it's the property owners, your citizens, who will be paying that for it over time. Again, when we did CFDs in the city of Prescott, we've done two, Hacienda and Hacienda 2, and they had significant interest rates for years, 8%, somewhere around 8 or 9. And that's kind of the way CFDs go.
Very good. Mayor Protem.
Oh, I would just like to comment, this sounds more like a kind of housekeeping chore, where we're complying with the state statutes.
In a way, I think we did add some substantive differences, but the, I think it was driven in large part because it was outdated. It was a housekeeping matter that we tried to put into a document that works now.
And we wanted to keep the maximum versatility for the council, to be able to either deny or accept or modify, you can do it, but you can't include this, or you can't include that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that sounds beneficial for the city and potentially beneficial for developers coming forward with infrastructure needs on new developments that aren't going to necessarily impact the entire community's cost to support. And this will be up to the residents of whatever development to be able to be fully knowledgeable about what is being provided to them from a developer and what their cost would be to reside in such a district. Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2022-1838.
Second.
Second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right.
Adoption of resolution number 2022-1839, committing an additional $6,840,000 of fund balance in the Streets Special Revenue Fund for acquisition of open space.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and council, Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director with the city of Prescott. The Streets and Open Space Fund was started in 2001, went for, went until 2016, went for 15 years, where the funds were able to be used for, to maintain and repair and build streets or buy open space. There were no percentages dividing how much was going either way. That was intentional by the council, because, you know, things change, and they significantly have what we considered open space from 20 years ago. But when the tax sun set in 2015, part of the budget process we did as we adopted the 2017 budget was to establish an amount of the remaining fund balance that would be able to be used, which was 1.8, I believe, 1.8 million. And that was set at the council at the time. And that was allowed because the fund balance was there. The revenue had been collected, it was setting in fund balance, so it was still available. As we put this budget together, we discussed this open space purchase, which we're going to be talking about next, and that there was still available fund balance from that revenue period that could be used, although this pretty much does away with any there without impacting significant road projects. So when we consider there's 1.6 left of the original, we need to add an additional amount of $6,840,000 so that we can have available funds that were part of the budget that you adopted to buy the open space. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Tenney.
Mark, this is a question I should have submitted to you in advance, so if you don't know the answer, just look at me like, why didn't you submit that to me in advance? And that is okay. Do you have any idea, ballpark, over the 15-year period of the 1% tax, the total amount of revenue that that brought in?
I do.
Fantastic. I thought you might.
I just left it in my seat. Give me two seconds.
Sure, absolutely. I apologize for not giving you a heads up.
The network's slow. It's coming up. All right. So the tax brought in over that 15-year period, $187,500,000 approximately.
Okay. Very good. That's good to know. So although the previous council intentionally left percentages out of it, it's safe to say that a very, very small amount of that actually went to open space. The majority went to something that we all use every single day, which is streets. No question about that, that there's a need for the majority to go, but the vast majority went to streets. And this is kind of bringing that balance sheet a little bit more toward the open space piece.
It's more to achieve councils' needs and goals right now.
Sure. Specific goal in this case, yeah.
I mean, it'll bring the total to around $27 million on open space, which is about 14% of that amount.
Right.
If I had to put a number to it. But again, there isn't much of the fund balance left.
Sure.
So, I mean, this pretty much doesn't end up being able to use those funds for this type of thing.
Gotcha. Well, terrific. Those are good figures. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that, you know, we are using some significant portion, 14% is not nothing at all. 14% of that amount that was brought in over the course of 15 years is going toward open space, with the remainder going toward, again, something that we all used to get here today.
But again, those who have been around town for a few years will remember that the tax already existed. It was 1% for streets. So it was needed for streets. The vote was only to allow it to also be spent for open space, and it also extended it a few years. So the whole, you know, 100, or 187 million, you know, part of that was already needed. So streets should have been a significant portion of it.
No question. Good clarification. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, from my understanding, I apologize. This transfer of funds from the fund balance from the streets and open space tax, the $6,840,000?
It's a commitment, yes. You're just saying that you are wanting to commit that amount of the fund balance to open space purchases.
So I guess my question, because it came up on your radio show today, is will it negatively impact any potential street projects by using these funds for open spaces to the streets?
Obviously, if the money is spent on open space, it's not there for streets.
Right.
During the budget process, we look at the budget year along with five future years. There were sufficient monies in the streets fund for that period of budgeting, taking this into account.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember voting for the open space roads tax, and as a fiscal conservative, I never really vote to tax myself, but in this case, I did. And I'm thrilled. I kind of feel like it's come full circle, and I'm very thrilled to be here during this momentous occasion.
All right. Any other further comments? Do we have any public comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2022-1839.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Now we're going to figure out how we're going to spend this.
Adoption of ordinance number 2022-1807, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of certain real property from Sun Dog Ranch and Arizona General Partnership for open space, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase. Approving city contract number 2023-024. And adoption of ordinance number 2022-1808, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of certain real property from Seaver Living Trust for open space, and authorizing the mayor to, mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase. Approving city contract number 2023-025.
Thank you, Sarah. That was a lot. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Joe Baines, Recreation Services Director for the city. Been working on this a long time, really excited to bring this to you. And we just start off with pretty pictures, right? That's the way we roll here. This particular picture is the Gap, and I think, I know the mayor's been up there when he was on council, but really beautiful area up on the Storm Ranch. So a little bit of background here, as we talked about earlier, in May of 2000, the voters approved a sales tax increase dedicated to street projects and open space acquisitions. And since that time, we've been acquiring strategic open space in the Dells and other places around the city of Prescott. And I'll use that word strategic quite a bit as we go through here, because this is really the definition, in my opinion, of strategic. In 2009, the city council adopted the Open Space Master Plan that identified the Storm Ranch as highly desirable for preservation. It was in the top one or two of what that committee looked at at that time. Just some information to date, in the Dells, the city has purchased just a little under 400 acres at a cost of $13,395,000, which is about $33,583 an acre. And just for reference, this total purchase, including the home site and everything, is $28,000 per acre. So we're a little less than what they have been paying. Little timeline on the Storm Ranch. I'll use Storm Ranch and Sun Dog kind of interchangeably. Sun Dog is the brand, and it's also the name of the partnership. So that's the entity that we're doing business with when it comes to the land. So it was homesteaded in 1926, so we've got about 100, almost 100 years of history here that we're working with. And maybe this is a good time to bring this up. The family, wonderful people to work with, real Prescottonians, and really had it in their heart that this should be something that the public could enjoy. Since that time, the family's actively been ranching, they continue to ranch on the property, they run cows on quite a bit of acreage in that area. In 2003, the city did their first purchase, 33.28 acres, and that was for, to protect the shoreline of Watson Lake. It came closer to the shoreline of Watson Lake, not right up to it, but close. In 2005, there was a large portion of the ranch that was sold to private developers, that's South Storm Ranch. And then in 2019, I think some of you were on council, maybe Councilman Shishka, we acquired 160 acres. And actually, I got to correct myself, Cindy Barks pointed out, it's actually 2018, I don't want to get my years wrong. And then we subsequently constructed the very popular Storm Ranch Trails. Immediately, those trails took off and people just loved those. And Chris Hosking, our trail coordinator, has done a really good job in naming those, Bam Bam and Pebbles and all kinds of cool names that people enjoy going on, they're very highly technical trails. And of course, as you know, November 9th of 2021, we entered into a letter of intent to purchase the remainder of the ranch. Wanted to go back to the 2009 council adopted open space plan and point out a couple of things here. These six, seven, eight things were really things that we looked for in pieces of property that would be desirable for the city to purchase, and I want to focus on a couple of them. One, and I think this gets lost a little bit, is, you know, the spending that it creates in the community. This is really an investment in our outdoor recreation. Tourism in the state of Arizona is about a $20 billion business, and we always work hard to get a bigger market share of that. And I think if you look at our bed tax revenues, you'll see that year over year, they've increased. And I'd like to think that we're a big part of that in the trails that we build and making Prescott a highly desirable place for people to come and recreate. So it checks all those boxes. The historical, like I say, 1926, it was homesteaded, there's some prehistoric sites in there. And strategic connectivity, you'll see here on this next map, which I'll just go to right now, what that means. So I don't know where my laser pointer is, but the yellow piece that you can see right there, the large yellow piece, that is the Storm Ranch. Thank you. Of course, it doesn't work.
We got it, it's yellow.
Okay, it's yellow. We'll color code it. I'll even do that. That was easy. So all this is the Storm Ranch, 302 acres altogether. The existing homestead sits right in here, not quite where those boxes are, but close. This is 160 acres that we purchased in 2019. The red that you see is the trail system that was constructed. These trails that are hatched are proposed trails with the State Land Department, they're not approved, but this is what we were working with our neighbors in Prescott Valley to connect to their trail system, which ends up at the top of Glassford Hill. And then we've got some other applications in to get this trail back over to the Iron King, which is right here. And this, of course, is the Peabody Trail, Watson Lake. And the other part of it, when I talk about it being strategic, is it sits right in the middle of the 474 acres of the Arizona Eco Development Act station that we did here a couple of years ago. So really, it lies right in the middle of all this stuff. Of course, we have an IGA with the county and Prescott Valley, and I've been looking at these blue colored pieces, which are state trust lands. So really, putting all this together, this sits right in the middle of it. This over here, where you see the P, in our budget, we've approved a planning for a park there called the Granite Dells Gateway Park. So you can see how it really fits in with everything else that we've got. Some of these other smaller pieces, this was a purchase that we did in the Granite Dells in 2008. And then, of course, this was 2000, right around that time, this was, the Flume Trail goes back here, so, I mean, all this really strategically connects together. A couple of pretty pictures, this is looking back towards Glassford, back towards the east. This is the approach to the Gap, the Gap is at the foot of the larger outcropping on the left of your screen there. This is looking back towards Watson Lake on the 300 acres. And let me... I have a little video for you. Nate, do you see where the video is?
Should be on.
Okay, perfect. So this is something I started putting together, that it starts in Watson Woods, which isn't really the project that we're talking about, but it heads towards and shows some really good footage of the Storm Ranch. So this is where we get into the 2018 purchase, right here. Run a different time of the year. Back on the Storm Ranch. Sorry, that was a little long.
Very cool, Joe, that reminded me of Top Gun Maverick. Councilman Tenney.
Yeah, thanks, Joe, spectacular. Video is great. Tim, if you'd had a video for the backhoe, I think we would have had much less discussion gone right there, but just a tip for the future. You know, spectacular, thank you so much for all of the work that you've done, and I want to thank the Seavers family, the Huddleston family, for working with you over the years on this. It's been, it's been a long haul. You touched on that just briefly, but I know you've done a ton of great work with the family and engendering their trust and letting them know that their legacy will live on through this, this open space acquisition if we approve it here in a few minutes. This is something I'm super excited about. I had a friend who lived in Granite Dells when I was a little kid, and we used to climb all back in there. Whether or not we stayed on his property is an open question, I'm not really sure at this point, but spent a lot of time back there. And you exactly right, the Storm Ranch Trails that the city's developed recently are terrific. I go through, I recently ran a half marathon through there, it's used in a ton of ways. I was out there just Saturday. This is spectacular land that we're looking at. This is not just any open space, this is, this is the prime piece of open space left in Prescott for us to acquire, like you say, really strategic, kind of keystone to a lot of pieces that we're bringing together. So once again, thank you for your work on this, and as you could probably guess, I'm going to be a yes vote.
But there is more, Councilman Tenney.
Councilman Montoya, did you want to ask a question?
I can wait, if Joe has more, I can wait.
Yeah, I just wanted to go over the deal points. And most of these really didn't change from the letter of intent, but I think it's important for the public to see this, too. So the deal points for the Sundog Ranch partnership, which is the property, which is the acreage, most of the acreage. Property contained in APN 10304005 for $20,000 per acre, that's roughly 80-acre piece. And the 222-acre piece, it's $25,000 per acre. The city will pay for all closing costs and survey. We will work with Sundog Ranch gladly and the Storm family to provide appropriate language and location for educational signage, memorializing the Storm family ranching history. We always want to do that anyway, we want to tie in history and education anywhere we can in our open space and trails. The City of Prescott and Sundog Ranch, we've already mutually agreed on a trail plan. We will allow the Sundog Ranch to continue cattle grazing operations on the purchased property, per the Arizona State Land Department's codes, which essentially, the carrying capacity for this 300 acres is about six cows, it's a cow and a calf, but really about 60 acres per animal somewhere in there. So it's really not much of an impact. And the purchase price for that will be $7,144,400. And summary of the deal points for the Seaver Living Trust, we'll purchase the two acres, the single-family home, it's a 2,750 square foot home that was built in 2007. The guest house was built in 2009, it's about 900 square feet. There's some outbuildings and a well contained in that, and that'll be at a cost of $1.3 million. We will grant a non-transferable, that's important, non-transferable life estate on the property in order for the grantees to continue to live on the property until they're passing. The grantees will pay for the utilities and general maintenance during the term of the life estate, and then they'll carry renters insurance on their personal property. So now, any questions or comments? And the Storm family, the Huddelsons are here, if you have any questions for part of the Storm family.
So, Joe, I just want to echo what Councilman Tenney just said a moment ago, which is, this is, this tickled a lot of vision and capacity on city staff's part, so you and everyone who's been involved in this are be extremely commended. And it takes a lot to be able to realize the anchor that this particular purchase represents. And so I just, I want to thank you, and I'm with Councilman Tenney, I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be a real valuable asset to our city, and I'm also a yes vote, so there you go.
Mayor Proton.
I just wanted to thank Joe and the council and the public. I think this is a wonderful thing, and it's, I feel like we're one step closer to our dream of a regional park, including that extinct volcano over there.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two questions, Joe. The first question is, the homestead, the two buildings and the outbuildings, does the city have plans for what they will do eventually when those become property of the city in terms of, you know, the right to possess those buildings? Are we making those like a visitor's center or information area? What are the plans for those buildings?
Great question, Councilman Moore. Initially, I think, you know, probably just some staging for maintenance would be part of that, especially if there's other pieces acquired around it, it would make sense. And then, secondly, yes, it could be a lot of different things, an educational center. You know, really want to be careful about how we manage it and manage it appropriately with a preserve, but there's a lot of opportunity there, and education's a big part of that. It's a, it's a really, really cool piece of property. The original chimney for the original homestead in 1926 has been preserved, it's out there. I didn't want to bring a lot of pictures, I want to, I want to respect the privacy of the family that's living out there, but suffice to say, there's some really, really cool stuff on there that could, in the future, have a lot of educational value in some way, shape, or form.
Great. My next comment is actually a comment, not a question, and it's more for our body of elected officials. I know I keep harping on this, but you showed a slide with the yellow land and the green land, and then the blue land, and we've talked about our intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County, Prescott Valley, and Prescott. And I still want to hit on this, that we need a funding mechanism in place to purchase land. I, I mean, obviously, we're transferring, you know, $6 million today to purchase this land, but we know that there's going to be opportunities in the future to purchase other land, and those funds need to be available when those opportunities become available. So I just want to say that, as the council, we really need to address a funding mechanism in place so that the funds are available when the land becomes available, so it doesn't hit the general fund. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. You know, Joe, in the time I've been a councilman, there's been a lot of twists and turns on this thing, and I hope, I'm really thankful that you hung in there. And Steve and Ellie, we really appreciate you guys and the Seavers, thank you so much. I tell you what, you probably could have asked a lot more and you didn't, and we appreciate that. And, you know, it's going to be awesome out there. After that 160 acres, I thought that we were almost done, and, you know, it's just another opportunity to preserve what's out there for everybody, so thank you very much.
Councilman Tenney.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. As you talked about preserving the privacy of the family that's still out there, and we appreciate so much their generosity and their forward thinking in making this available to the citizens of Prescott and people in the region going forward. In the, in the trail plans that you showed, it looks like the trails intentionally leave a lot of buffer zone around those people's private residence for now, is that correct?
They do. And I was going to point out in the video, there's one spot where it says proposed trail alignment. That is so cool back there, and it's at the very back. So yes, we tried to remain respectful.
Absolutely.
And part of our negotiation was trying to keep their privacy intact as much as we could, and there's enough land out there that we were able to do that, and in the future, we may expand upon that, but... But on the one end of the gap, there will be a trail that'll come up to the gap off of the Iron King.
Sure.
It's far enough away. So, yeah, a lot of great opportunity. Chris, Chris can do a lot of work with that.
That's great. Well, I really appreciate you clarifying that for us, and part of our, the way we can show our gratitude is to continue to show our respect for their privacy and what they're continuing to occupy out there while they share with the rest of us at the same time. Thank you again so much, folks.
Councilman Moore.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I did have just one additional question that came up in the slides, and that was the notation of the 1,000 acres that was sold to a developer in 2005. Do we know if there's any development that's going to be happening adjacent to this property anytime soon? Or is this going to pretty much stay as it is for a long period of time?
Councilman Moore, I'm not sure about that. The acreage was less than 500. The total ranch was about 1,000 at the beginning.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And as far as where they're at in the process is, I really don't know.
Okay.
We have worked with them on trail alignments through that portion, so that part is in place, but I don't know where they're at in their process.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you as well, Joe. I know that you've worked on this for a number of years, and different families and stakeholders were involved at different levels, and it just took a lot of patience and really establishing a true amount of trust. And I think we're worthy of that trust, and we're going to continue to be worthy of that trust. It's clearly a strategic acquisition. And even though sometimes people criticize that we're taking private land into public ownership, and when that happens, there's no more property taxes that are collected. But quite frankly, I think we're establishing, the city of Prescott in these areas is a true premier ecotourism location that will generate financial benefits just from all the people that will visit it and want to hike it, and making sure that there's continuity of view shed within there. That's so important for hikers to really have a true appreciation for the Granite Dells and all the surrounding property. It makes it so attractive and so unique. So, in the long term, it's certainly a great legacy for the families involved in respecting their privacy as this development continues. And then, being able to potentially connect it with the state land trust and the properties up there so that we could even expand it into the creation of a true regional park, I think, is something that we all can be very, very proud of. And I can't thank you enough for your work getting us to this point.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, regardless of what Councilman Shishka said, I think it was a valuable and a reasonable acquisition and something that is going to make a true legacy in the long, long run. So, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Joe. Do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. Ruth Ann Norris.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm really pleased to be here today to encourage your support for these two ordinances, although it doesn't sound like I really need to encourage your support, and that's encouraging. The Granite Dells Preservation Foundation has been working with the public and with all of you and all of our sister organizations like Save the Dells to get to this point where a regional park is actually really feasible. And this is such an important acquisition from our foundation and from all of our community partners, lots of citizens. You've heard from all of them how this, how much this means to a lot of us. I'd like to really thank staff. I want to thank Joe in particular and the families I know and Mrs. Rusi, who's been working on this for longer than I have. This took a lot of work behind the scenes for many years, and I just commend everyone's patience and dedication to get us to the ultimate goal. And yes, it's a strategic acquisition, and it's going to be great. And I want to also put in a plug for wildlife. This is a beautiful place, but if all we have is a parcel here and a parcel there, it leaves our wildlife stranded. And the habitat, this is important habitat through here, and so, this, it's not just beautiful rocks, but it's a wonderful place to be, to take families to hike. And so, just want to thank everyone for getting us here. Thank you.
Dotte Morris.
I'm also with the Granite Dells Preservation Foundation on the board, and I want to thank all of you. I've lived here for 25 years, and in that time, I've been concerned about the Dells, the change, the development that has occurred, and this is such a gift. What a wonderful opportunity. And that's what makes Prescott special. You hear about the town square, but the Dells. What other community has something like that in the United States? This is so unique, and I want to thank you all for being so supportive in this purchase. This is something that will last as long as Prescott is here. And that, and I know that the Granite Dells Preservation Foundation will do whatever we can to raise money or whatever we need to do to make the community aware of the Dells, and thank you all very much. And also, Joe, what a job you've done over the years. You have put in such an effort. So many people have worked to make this successful.
Thank you, Dot.
Excuse me, Tom Rusi.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Tom Rusi, I'm a longtime resident of Prescott and currently a chairman of Save the Dells. What a big day this is for the citizens of the community, but especially for Save the Dells that was formed five years ago with a specific, two initial goals of preserving the, what turned out to be the 474 acres, iconic acres in the heart of the Dells, that was accomplished with the AED annexation. And now, with these additional parcels that the city has moved forward with, we are that much closer to one of our second goal, and that was for creation of the regional park and preserve. And I just want to, on behalf of Save the Dells and the citizens, and Kathy and I, just want to thank the families in particular that worked with Joe to make this happen. Two of them are here, and both of them are former classmates or schoolmates at Sacred Heart as well as at Prescott High School. So, this is a special day for a lot of us long-timers. But I also prepared some written comment from Save the Dells. So, on behalf of Save the Dells and our community, I would like to thank the owners of the ranches, the Prescott City Council, our city staff, and especially Joe Baines, the head of Park and Recreation Department, for making this happen. The purchase, this purchase, coupled with the preserving of the iconic 474 acres in the heart of the Dells and the previous 160 acres of the Storm Ranch, is another step forward to the creation of the Granite Dells Regional Park and Preserve. In addition, this helps to right the wrong perceived by many citizens when the money raised by the 2,000 open space road tax initiative passed by the citizens was used disproportionately on roads. This new purchase is a victory for truth and integrity in government. We would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate the Prescott City Council, the Prescott Valley Town Council, and the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors for adopting an intergovernmental agreement with the goal of protecting Glassford Hill from development and making it part of the regional park. It is an important step in fostering real regional cooperation for the benefit of all citizens. With continued regional cooperations and citizen vigilance, the Granite Dells Regional Park and Preserve will truly be the centerpiece of our area, our central park. In closing, Save the Dells looks forward to working with the city and the citizens as a regional park becomes a reality, and also working on other critical issues, including water, growth, preserving our quality of life, and all that makes Prescott special, which is a part of Save the Dells' greater mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have any other comment?
That's all, Mayor.
Any other questions or concerns from the council? And I am very pleased to ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1807.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
And Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1808.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
I can say that's quite a monumental achievement and something that I think everybody here on the council is very proud to be a part of. All the work that you've done and everybody in the community that's going to benefit from this, and even tourists that will maybe see this for the first time and be able to enjoy it is something we're all very, very proud of. Thank you very much. All right, we move on to item 10.
E.
E?
Everybody bear with me, this one's a doozy. Approval of multiple items related to Phase 3 of the taxiway C relocation construction project at Prescott Regional Airport as follows. One, approval and acceptance of federal aviation administrative grant 3-04-0030-053-2022 in the amount of $7,404,300. Two, approval of city contract number 2019-069A35, an amendment to city contract number 2019-069 with DIBL for construction administration services. Three, approval of city contract number 2023-028 with Fan Contracting for project construction. Four, approval and acceptance of Arizona Department of Transportation grant for their 2.5% project share of $194,850. Five, approval of the city's 2.5% project share for $194,850. And six, approval of night work.
Wow. Congratulations. That was impressive.
That was all in one breath.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Two back-to-back $7 million decisions. I don't have video, and I don't have audio and beautiful pictures, but this is a great opportunity for us to go ahead and complete what has been a three-phase project associated with relocation of commercial service taxiway Charlie, which is right alongside our commercial service runway. It is currently positioned about 325 feet from the center line to center line of those two surfaces, and by safety standards under the FAA, it should be about 400 feet in separation. So, the total cost of this phase is $7.794 million, and all three phases together, because I've been here two times before, are actually $18.5 million, which is actually more than it cost us to build the terminal. So, this particular project is going to be awarded to Fan Construction, who is considered to be the lower bid, at $7.194 million. And also, DIBL will be providing construction administration services. The FAA covers 95% of the cost of this grant. The remainder of the costs are split equally between the state and the local. So, for this $7.7 million project, the city's share is only $194,000 and $850. So, it's actually a really good deal. Actually, our share is less than it would have cost us to maintain the taxiway had it been in the original location, and we have a whole new taxiway as a result of it. So, this is really exciting. As always, the city does sign grant assurances when we receive this grant, and this is going to be moving forward in the next few months with a gap in the winter time. As with many of the construction projects, there is a long lead time on some of the items, including concrete, so we are working through those lead time items, but it will be completed within the fiscal year.
Well, I don't know about everybody else, but I sure like those numbers. Questions, comments? Mayor Proton.
Well, I would just like to say that this project is the culmination of our efforts here, combined to increase our airport traffic safety and make the airport more efficient by eliminating those hotspots. Do you want to make a few comments about that?
Yes. As a matter of fact, the FAA identified originally three hotspots on the airport, and this does mitigate two of those hotspots. And what that means is a hotspot is where there's been a number of incursions or safety conflicts that have occurred, and so, that is part of what this project will be doing is mitigating those hotspots.
Very good. Thank you. I mean, I think this just is another example of the efforts that we have made to protect the buffer zone around the airport, to make sure that we're aligning with the expectations of the FAA. And with that alignment, we continue to see the granting of these substantial federal dollars to be able to make sure that our capacity and our growth in the airport area has continued to be reimbursed by the FAA, and I think we are clearly demonstrating our commitment to making sure that these competing interests are balanced in a way that the airport is properly supported and protected. Any other comments or concerns? Any public comment?
Oh, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve acceptance of federal aviation administration grant 3-04-0030-053-2022 in the amount of $7,404,300.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
I'll entertain another motion.
Anyone else want to take a turn?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2019-069A35.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
I move to approve city contract number 2023-028.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Mayor, I move to approve acceptance of Arizona Department of Transportation grant for their 2.5% project share of $194,850.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote. Councilman Moore, you want to get on on this?
Passes 6-0.
Sure, I'll do another one. Move to approve the city's 2.5% project share for $194,850.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Mayor, I will move to approve night work.
Second.
That was the best one, by the way.
I did, did you say second, Councilman Shishka? I thought I heard you say that. Okay, thank you. He said it before you.
But I was laughing at the same time, so.
That's okay. I still got it.
Kind of a strangle.
All right.
Passes 6-0.
Very good. Thank you. Well, with that, we've come to the end of our voting session, and I'll bring up one comment from a president that I have a lot of respect for, and it's very apropos for what's happening in our country today. The issue today is the same as it has been throughout history, whether man shall be allowed to govern himself or be ruled by a small elite. This was set over 220 years ago by President Thomas Jefferson. So, with that said, this voting meeting is adjourned. All right.